Is that on? I have thirty seconds. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Still don't know what they, still don't know what the building in front of you or town is.
They're not building anything.
It's a greenhouse.
That is a greenhouse.
Yes.
All ears.
Most of it is just being stopped by.
Adam, Adam was in this morning, so I will review.
Okay, a call, a meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Newbury, Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, to order. First order of business is to approve the meeting minutes of May fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes?
Yes.
I had no gribbles.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the minutes of May four, two thousand and sixteen.
And the second, is there any further discussion about that at all? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Election of Officers and Representatives. Can you help us out here? What, what are the various things that need to be done?
So we need to do Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, Concom Member, MVPC Commissioner, Alternate Commissioner, and the ZBA Rep.
Okay. So.
So, start with the Chair.
Start with the Chair.
I move to appoint Chair Weiss to be Chair Weiss.
Second.
All those against? No, I, I'm happy to do it. I'm thinking maybe one more year, I don't know. But I wanted to, I did want to see through the master plan that's still in progress, so I do, I would appreciate doing it one more year, so at least, so, thank you. So, I have a, all those, any further discussion about it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair, so I can return the compliment.
Favor.
Yeah, I can do that. I nominate George Morse as Vice Chair.
Second.
Any discussion about that? Are you, are you, are you recep, are you demuring? Are you demuring?
Hard fought battle.
Hard fought battle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Clerk is, who is the Clerk?
Well.
We don't really have a Clerk.
We don't really have a Clerk. It was, it was Richard and I, we, sort of Elizabeth has been filling in.
What does the Clerk do?
Reads them, reads, reads the.
Reads a public meeting notice.
The public meeting notices.
I'm a poor reader.
So, can I have a motion to nominate Elizabeth for that position?
Salute.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from people other than Elizabeth? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then there's the.
Conservation Commission.
That is not me, I'm out of here.
I was.
Rego is wrapped, so.
You are.
I am, I am not going to continue, so you don't want to appoint me.
No, I would be willing to take that out.
On me?
You don't want to do it temporarily.
Yeah, could you do it?
If there was a reason why I had to do it temporarily, I would. I may even stay on, depending on, you know, whether other people want to be on and who resigns and what all.
Sure.
My term is up, so I gotta.
When is your term up?
Talk about that. Huh?
When, when, when does the Concom?
Apparently, I, I thought I had another year, but apparently not. I got a letter to, email today.
Fiscal year.
So it's June thirtieth?
Yeah, so the Selectmen are looking for recommendations or expressions of interest by June fourteenth, I think.
Yeah.
Thereabouts, yeah.
Jim just did put his hand up.
Yeah.
This is a liaison role, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This is a liaison.
No, no, no.
No, you're a voting member of the Commission.
You're a voting member.
No, you're, it's not like the, the, the ZBA is the liaison.
Is a liaison. This is where.
You're a member, you'll be appointed a member of the Concom by the.
No, under, under Mass.
I mean, it's not that tough a job. I suspect you've had worse.
Under, under Mass General Law, one of the Concom members is a Planning Board member.
Yeah.
So.
So, I think that's a capital idea. But John, you'll stay on until your term is up.
Well, well, yeah, because Rego doesn't come back till July, so I'm probably.
So you're probably gonna be, okay.
And my term is up the first of July, so.
All right, so let's.
So we'll do it together for a while, so we'll do it together.
Well, not necessarily. I gotta find out where, some members we haven't seen for quite a while, whether they're going to resign or not, or whether somebody else wants to join. I'm not going to argue with anybody that wants to join, I have quite enough to do.
But this, this would be effective July first.
Yeah.
So for how, how long a period? One year?
It's for one year.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So he would be the representative?
Not the representative.
No, he is a member.
He would be a voting?
He's a full room member, just like any other member.
Just as John has been.
Okay.
So, you fully understand that, Jim? You weren't sure, but now you.
Well, meet once a month, and the length of the meetings vary. Sometimes you're out of there by quarter of eight, other times it's ten o'clock. But fortunately Doug is extraordinarily knowledgeable.
Yeah.
And given the, it's quite convenient that he is the agent and the Chair. And of course Susan is a member, and she knows, definitely, very definitely knows the score as well. So there's a lot of technical help there.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good learning opportunity. I think it'd be a good opportunity to learn about that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Now, what is it that we do? Do we recommend to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Okay.
All of these are recommended.
Yeah.
All of these that we're going through will be recommended to the Board of Selectmen.
No, the first three are basically internal.
What we do?
That's what, that's what we do.
I know that.
Then the Concom and the MVPC are recommendations.
Concom, MVPC, and MVPC Alternate.
Right.
Right? So, Concom, do you have any other questions about it?
No.
Can I have a motion?
A motion.
So moved.
Second.
Can he do that?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
Move to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that Jim be appointed as a member of the Conservation Committee.
Effective July first.
Effective July first.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're done. Excellent.
Uh, no, we're not.
No, MVPC.
We're done with Jim.
Yeah, MVPC as ZBA Rep.
Uh, let's do Z, well, MVPC.
Commissioner.
I go in and out on this, I don't mind telling you. They are, they are after a new Executive Director. Dennis, as you know, as I've reported, is, is resigning. And I guess I'm intrigued to see if there's any, going to be any change in the way that the agency is run. And so for that point of view, I think maybe it's worthwhile for me to stay on for at least another year on that. So I think so, yes. I think. Because it's a bit of a passive commission, to be honest. So I'd like to see it become more active, and we'll see what happens, but. So I guess, yeah, I'm okay to do that. But we need to. So, do we need to have a motion and vote?
We move to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that John Weiss be appointed as a Newbury's Representative to the MVPC.
Second.
Any comments, anybody? Any insights from anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the Alternate.
Alternate Commissioner.
Alternate Commissioner has been Martha. And so I would certainly recommend that Martha be the Alternate. She did go to a couple of meetings this year where I wasn't able to make it, and so that continuity is important. There are, the, one of the things is that there are some towns, there's like sixteen towns, am I right? I think there's fifteen. And there's some that are there most of the time, and then there's some that are never there. Which is really unfortunate. But Newbury, David was a very good member, and was there all the time. And you were the Alternate for David as well, am I right?
Yeah, I've been the Alternate for a long time.
Yeah. And, and so it's important to have that kind of continuity where we don't miss, so I think it's important, so. Did I, did I nominate her? Or did I not?
I think.
Am I just babbling here? Okay, I'd like to nominate Martha as the Associate.
Alternative.
Alternative member.
Alternative Commissioner, second.
Any comments on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we get to the ZBA.
ZBA.
Because it's the last letter of the alphabet.
Put my hand up again.
Have you enjoyed it this year?
Actually, I have.
Good. So another year of learning and appreciating, and that's a good idea. So I'd like to nominate George for that position, I think that's gone well.
Second.
Any comments from anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate them.
Do we have to reappoint Peter as Recommendation to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, I think we should also do that.
Yeah. Okay, I would like to recommend that Peter be, what do, for consid, we'll, we'll put his name up for consideration by the, by the Board of Selectmen, that the Planning Board recommends that he be retained as.
Reappointed.
Reappointed, okay, that's what it is.
Second.
Any comments on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You willing to do it?
That's irrelevant.
That's where the discussion comes in.
Yeah, that's. All right. So that is it, right? So, do we have no appearances? We did have a, we thought we have one, but she was unable to come in?
Yeah, I thought we were going to have Joyce Macheros coming in with the McLeod Ave A and R, but that's not ready, so she is asked to be on the June twenty-second agenda. So I've just put her on that tentatively unless we hear otherwise.
Whose A and R is it?
Joyce Macheros for the McLeod Ave.
Oh, oh, okay.
One, which was voted at town meeting.
Okay.
So they're, they're, they're still working on that, so. I do have a couple of, did have a couple of people come in to see me this, actually today. I don't know if you want me to report on those in lieu of the appearances?
Sure.
First one was Adam True. Who came in with his engineer Scott Cameron with a preliminary plan for the three-lot subdivision that he had talked about. So we went over it, it looks, it looks pretty straightforward. You know, the two front lots would be forty thousand square feet each. He's looking at a road, there's an existing curb cut there now, which is on the north side of the barn. And that's a highway curb cut that I guess was sort of hard fought by Bill Hurley. So he would like to retain that and bring, you know, bring the road in there, and then he'll do a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac, and then a very long driveway going back to his house along the southern edge, so closer, closer to you. I guess there's an old car path there.
Now whose subdivision is this?
This is Adam True.
Oh, Adams, okay, is this in the racetrack?
Uh, yes.
It is, okay.
Yes, so.
So that's the genesis of that rumor, yeah.
Yes, I think they were mixing that up with the De Armand, which is going to be seven, maybe.
Oh, okay.
Close to each other. So we went over a few things, and I suggested that he come before the Board for an informal discussion, just to see if there are any other things that, that you all would like to see, or questions that you have before they actually get into engineering and submit the application.
That's a very good idea.
Yeah, no, we should do that. I guess the question I had, just from what, the way you were explaining it, was that I assumed that the barn remains as one lot, and will be forty thousand square feet.
That's correct.
And then another lot will be further down in the pasture?
Right behind, right behind.
Right behind it?
Right behind it.
So that means that the road with the cul-de-sac is really not feeding any homes off the cul-de-sac?
No, it is, I think the frontage for.
It's feeding, it's feeding a driveway?
No, well, no, it's feeding all three, well, it's feeding the second lot and Adam's, Adam's lot.
The road, is the cul-de-sac feeding it, or is the road feeding it?
The cul-de-sac is feeding it.
There's only frontage for one lot.
So, but you, the way you're explaining it, is if this is one A, and this is one lot, and that's forty thousand square feet?
And the cul-de-sac comes in.
Here?
No, on the other side.
Here?
Yeah.
And does what?
And it goes in, comes in five, five hundred feet.
Well, that's what I was saying. So comes in, goes this way?
Yeah.
Five hundred feet's a long way, so it feeds this off of this, not off of the cul-de-sac.
That first lot, the one with the barn, has enough frontage for high road.
High road frontage.
Okay, and then the second one?
And then the new road that ends in the cul-de-sac is the frontage for the second house.
And so the house is up here someplace?
The house.
Like in the middle, in the, in the middle of, in the middle of where?
It's right where your hand was.
Right here. So there's a, a second lot here?
Is it near the flagpole?
It's, I'm not sure where the flagpole is.
So this is the second lot that he's going to sell?
Well, the first lot is here with the barn.
Yeah?
Second lot is here.
Oh, okay.
And it comes off the cul-de-sac, it's sort of in here, so it's got frontage along there. And then this also provides, there's not enough frontage here for Adam's lot, so all of this will be frontage for Adam's lot.
Okay, let's see it. Because it just doesn't seem like five hundred feet and two acres fit, that's all.
It, it works, I, I looked at the frontage in the area.
Okay.
And the reason he's putting the, his driveway on the south side closest to Elizabeth is because there's a low spot on the north side in the field that they're going to be using for stormwater infiltration. And so if they were to put the driveway in there, they would have to raise it up. And it would create issues with the drainage that kind of goes through there. And if you look at it, if you remember when we were walking Debbie York's and looking at Glenn's, there was that, that sort of wet area that went through there, and that all feeds into that system there.
Comes down to my property.
So I did suggest that the engineer look at that, because essentially they're kind of cutting, cutting that off, they're going to put a berm along the north side.
That was a problem we had with that, right?
Right. So I suggested that he look at that whole system that's in there.
Good, that's good.
Who's his engineer?
Uh, Scott Cameron.
Hey, hold on.
From Morin, I've got his card, I don't remember the firm.
Okay, so he should come in soon?
Yeah.
Did he say where, he's thinking about putting his home on that lot?
It's into the, it's a little back into the woods.
But more on the north side, or the?
Uh, it's more on the north side.
Okay. I just, I'm more wondering about the road, if it has to come up and then come back over.
It will kind of cut over a little bit, he's, there's kind of a turnaround in front of his house as well.
I'm feeling that.
And they are going to be looking for a number of waivers. I explained to them that we have approved, adopted new subdivision rules and regs, so we have a slightly wider right-of-way. They would like to do gravel instead of asphalt. They're looking to reduce the diameter of the cul-de-sac, which I think they've already had a preliminary discussion with Nate, Nate or the fire engineers.
Really? Because that's, it would surprise me if they were interested in reducing it.
Well, I think that, I said that they, they need to prove that they can get a ladder truck around there, they're going to do a little blow-up with a template, they've got a soft turn, or whatever the, the software is.
Mm-hmm.
And that whatever the fire department wants is what is, it's going to end up being.
Well, yeah, that's the way it usually works.
Right, right.
Okay.
So.
Okay, someone, June or July?
Um, so I think potentially our next agenda. The June, June eighth agenda.
Good.
And I'll confirm that with him.
And then Martha, if it's an informal appearance, does that have to be, did the notification receive notice?
No, no, not until actually they do their submission. So I know that he's trying to move quickly, so I think whatever feedback comes out of that informal meeting, they'll get onto paper pretty soon and submit the application.
Now, is that going to be at our next meeting?
Um, I think the informal will be at our next meeting. I think so. So that was one appearance. The second was Bill DiFrancesco came in to see me this morning, and he has talked with John and Doug. I'm just going to pass out, this is a reduced version of his site plan.
Thanks.
And what he, his question was, I don't know if you all remember, when we were out of the sidewalk, he talked about, over on the, to the left of the buildings, he had a stone wall, a retaining wall.
Right.
And he was going to ask for permission from the Conservation Commission to get rid of that and put in basically a slope instead, and that was approved. And what he's wondering now, he's, he's going to have a chain-link fence in there, sort of behind that berm, I think, I'm, I can't quite visualize how it's going to work. But right now he's got a retaining, right, he's got a guardrail right at the edge of the pavement before that drop-off happens. And he has an option here of either continuing to use that retaining, or that guardrail, which was on the approved plan, or to put in big boulders from the site there instead. And he has talked to Doug and to John.
I sent it back to Martha, everybody talks to me and I send them to Martha.
And he talked to me, so he just wanted to get a sense of, you know, would one be preferable over the other? And to me, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. You know, it's, he's got the guardrail on the other side, so it would be consistent with that.
The guardrail would stay.
To the guard, if the guardrail stayed, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. No, I don't see anything wrong with that, whichever one, whichever one he wants to do.
Right, the guardrail sounds like it's actually a little easier for him in terms of maintenance, because he can mow behind it, if he's got the boulders, he's got a weed whack around every single one of them. So I think aesthetically, he thought the boulders might be nicer, but. And this ties in, he's doing some other site improvements, which he had mentioned, adding some landscaping, cutting down on some of the paving and adding some landscaping, landscaped islands and peninsulas.
I just had a second thought, you mentioned that a moment ago.
Yeah.
Get some small, I think the, the only thing that I would caution would be that he has them in such places that they will drain.
Well, that's why I was asking the question about the storm.
Because, yeah, if, if he's got it right in the clay, we're going to have mosquito heaven, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's got to drain down to be, to be acceptable.
Yeah. So what I said to him is that with these changes, he's going to need to bring a plan before the Board anyway, for, you know, probably a minor modification to the approved site plan. So Eric is going to put something together. But I, I told him that I would bring the question of the boulders versus the guardrail up with you all tonight, and see if you had any feelings about it.
I like boulders, but I don't, to me, it's his, it's his choice. I don't, what do you, I mean, I don't. Boulders are fine, guardrails, is that a wooden guardrail or is that a metal guardrail?
It's a wooden, wooden guardrail.
It's fine.
Better.
It's probably better.
Fine, fine, you know.
Boulders, boulders have less maintenance, but.
What's that?
I think the guardrail would look better. Boulders have less maintenance, though.
That's true.
Well, let's hope it doesn't, you know. Right. People drive into it, it could be problematic.
Wooden guardrails would be nice, that's, I mean, no one's going to see them from the road, I don't think, though. Am I right?
With the snow is going, is that wet?
Um. Well, it's not, it's not in wetlands, I don't know if it's.
I just remember it being wet.
Am I right? That doesn't happen until Phase Two. Am I right? Wrong? The snow storage?
Probably not, because he's only building the first three buildings.
The first three buildings, so I don't think it.
Phase one.
You got snow storage down here.
Oh, oh, down here?
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, thanks, George.
Well, I, I thought we were talking up here, but.
Yeah, I, the one that jumps out to you is, is this one and the one back there, but I didn't see that one, so. I don't think that's what, Peter?
No, it's on a slope.
Yeah, that, yeah. Okay, so then when he is, he, he should be coming in in June or July as well, then?
I think so.
Okay.
But I'll pass that back to you.
Just out of curiosity, how are we doing with Joe reviewing his work?
Bill is, I think he's finishing finish grading, so I want to try to get Joe in there.
Okay.
To take a look at that.
Just give him a call before.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Good, okay. Anything else on these issues? The master plan update?
Couple things on that. I sent out the email yesterday regarding the forum on June fifteenth, so we are going to hold that here. And we'll start getting the word out about that. And I'd like to get our Public Engagement Committee together to talk about various ways of getting, getting the word out. Brian, Brian Forgeit has been tremendously helpful, so I'm sure he will, well, I shouldn't shouldn't say I'm sure, but I think he would send another email out for us.
Okay.
And we'll get it on Twitter and Facebook and all that stuff.
That's three weeks from tonight. And, yeah, it would be great if we had a good crowd, totally would. Do we, are we going to have a little meeting with Roberta before that, to really understand how they're going to, they're going to present the results of the survey?
Yeah, they're going to synthesize the survey, probably they'll at least do all the multiple-choice ones. She's thinking, because we've gotten such a good response, that the written responses may be divvied up between the different working groups for the different elements. Somehow, I mean, they may, they may try to summarize those, but the, the answers are varied, and some of them are long. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to work yet.
I'm not quite sure how that works with the working groups either.
Yeah, and I'm not sure either.
Because we've had kind of mixed results with the working groups.
Speaking of that, did Marshall call you?
No, but I got a note from him.
Okay.
And I got a note from Nate, and I got a note from Maggie. So, it's happening. So it's happening. It just wasn't a priority, you know?
And Nate talked to me about it today as well.
Yeah, and I sent another one to John.
Okay.
Early in the piece, there were some issues raised by committee members about climate change and what, if anything, are we doing about it? Is that still on a live issue? Because I don't, I, I'm not aware of any discussion that has happened on that.
There hasn't been any active discussion. Um, Roberta and I had a, a kind of a brief discussion about it. Um, her feeling is that it actually kind of touches on all the elements that we're dealing with.
Sure, sure.
But I think that it will be probably a primary discussion with the natural resources.
With the which?
Natural resources.
Oh, that's where it belongs, I would think.
Right.
As a, as a primary home, sure.
As a primary thing.
Main residence.
So, um, that will be part of a discussion. So I guess, getting back to your question, um, you know, do we wanna try to have any kind of a meeting before the public forum?
With Roberta.
With Roberta?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
With the entire master plan committee? Or?
Maybe not.
Okay.
I don't, it's June, I, I, maybe you and me and anyone else from the board who wants to join us, maybe George, if you'd want to do that.
I can, as long as you don't get up to a level where we need to notice a meeting, I'm sure we can.
Yeah, I mean, just the two of us and you, and then we just review the results to date and just point them in the right direction for the larger meeting to come. I think that makes my.
If you give me a date, I'll plan to be there unless it's my wife's birthday.
No, I'm away until the seventh of June, so I can do it, so. I mean.
Sometime in the week.
Somewhere between the eighth and the fifteenth, we can do it.
Okay. And she did say that she didn't, she didn't feel she needed to meet with the public engagement group, so I think we can just.
And so when will you guys meet? Just sometime?
That should be sometime very soon to get the advertising going, and I know you're gonna have some.
I was really happy with everybody who was at town meeting handing stuff out. That was terrific. Really worked out well. And, and, and if I'm not mistaken, how many responses have we gotten?
Well, we've actually, well, last I checked, we had about two hundred and sixty online, and I've got somewhere be, probably about seventy-five paper copies.
Really?
Yes.
And they have to be input?
So, so, they have to be inputted. So, so, all right, so what are you looking for from us? Like, five or ten each?
You know, if somebody.
Ten would be a lot.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody could take five or ten each.
I'll take five.
Roberta is going to keep the online survey open. It was supposed to close, um, on Friday, but she's gonna keep it open until next week, so that we have time to input. And also, Brian has reached out to his teachers. He and I communicated about it a couple of times, but, um, I asked him again yesterday if he could maybe reach out to social studies or history teachers to try to get students involved, because we're looking for at least a few people under twenty. And Peter Quimby has also sent it out to the families of all the staff and faculty who live in Newbury. And, you know, I encouraged him to have their children fill it out as well. So, um, they've both been terrific.
All right, I'll split the bit, I'll take seven or eight.
We had talked about a stormwater component. Frankly, I don't think it needs to be very much, but I think it would be a cool thing to be able to report to the EPA that we have said something in the updated master plan. It could be just a couple of, a couple of lines. In other words, do what the hell we're told, you know, just, just salute.
Yeah.
Come to attention and salute. But I think it should be recognized.
Yep, no, I agree.
It's, it's, it's.
We have a stormwater section in the community facilities. We, we haven't attacked it yet. I think that Marshall had that as a responsibility, so let me see what he's gonna do with it. Probably nothing, so we'll just take something from the report and plug it in.
All right.
Let me see where we are with that. I, I, I'm still waiting for all of those individuals to get me information.
Okay, 'cause it might, it's something that might also kind of naturally, at least overlap with the natural resources.
Oh, yeah, that, that's where it would belong, certainly.
And I would imagine that we'd also talk about the hazard mitigation.
We can take it out, we can certainly take it out of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was in there because it wasn't that serious. I mean, it wa, wasn't considered along those lines. It was considered as hard, you know, a hard design issue, stormwater, right?
Right.
And it wasn't considered a, in, in that much of an, in the year two thousand and five.
Right, and now it's really flood mitigation.
Yeah, I'm not sure it needs to be considered as anything other than a design requirement, other than for PR purposes to impress the EPA.
That's fine.
You know, I, if, the board feels it needs to be expanded. I, I'd already given Martha something, which I believe you disagreed with. Yeah.
I wouldn't say that.
Some time, some time ago.
Yeah, I think I have that.
But, um, I don't think there's any need for it. I did something, 'cause I was asked to.
Okay.
But.
So, back to you, the surveys, if we each take down.
Um, if, if everybody could take between five and ten, that would be really helpful.
All right, I'll take ten.
Like I said in my email, like, we can do it, but we don't get back until Wednesday of next week, leave early tomorrow morning, so.
Yeah.
But if that's okay, then Wednesday, I'll.
Let me, uh, okay. Let me see.
We'll try to get them down, and then if there's some leftover.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, and just.
All right, so at the end of the meeting tonight, you just hand out the, to all of us, and we'll take those and do the best we can.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Now, we have no problem doing that under the same email?
Um, that's correct. You can enter as many as you want to under the same.
I could've done ten. Sorry. Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good. Okay, anything else on master plan?
Not for me. Does anybody else have anything?
No, just that, I, the guys who I've been working with are, are putting some pieces together, and I think that'll be helpful, so. And that's on the community facilities, which is council of aging and parks and recreation. We have to decide how we're gonna handle, uh, the policing facility. We haven't, I've got that whole section just sitting there, waiting to see what happens.
Well, we may have some. Um, the municipal building committee did meet a couple of weeks ago, and the majority voted to, um, since, since we now have a PNS for the, the, um, protection to property, the committee still feels that, given that that's an option, that the public safety building is still the best long-term solution. So that is gonna be the recommendation to, um, to the selectmen.
That the, which building?
The public safety.
Right, the whole thing? Fire, police, both?
Yeah.
Because at one point, it was discussed cutting back, letting the fire stand.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly. Eric is, is going to be making a, a recommendation to the selectmen on the fourteenth.
Is he? Okay.
So that will be.
And so the selectmen may choose not to do that.
So they, they may feel that it's, it's, you know, gonna be more effective to do something else.
Okay.
So, you know, some, sometime within the next couple of months, we should know.
All right, so we, we don't have to be concerned about it in the master plan that much. We'll, we'll take whatever happens. Okay, so new, anything else then? We'll get off of master plan, go on to new business, the forty B? Everybody knows about this, right? No?
Um, I think so. I think you all.
Hey, where it was coming.
Right, so it actually, um, the application was submitted, um, it's called Byfield Estates. It was submitted on May eleventh. We received, um, and it was submitted right after that to Mass Housing. We received a letter from Mass Housing, um, last Thursday. And that basically started, um, started a thirty-day review period after discussion with, um, town council and Chairman Walker yesterday. We asked for and have received a thirty-day extension, um, on that review period. There is going to be a presentation by the applicant on June fourteenth, and sometime shortly after that, there will be a site walk.
And the June fourteenth is, that's not our meeting?
No, it's the selectmen.
Selectmen's meeting, right.
Okay, so that's a big me, that's a big meeting night.
So it is, it is a big meeting, meeting night. So, uh, we'll be asking for review comments from, obviously, the planning board and fire and police. The zoning board does not get involved at this stage, but Board of Health, Conservation Commission.
That has to go through the Concom, does it not? They're not exempt from environmental issues.
They're not exempt from state regulations, so they do have to submit a notice of intent.
Yeah.
And this is twenty-four units?
And so, yes, they've proposed twenty-four units, six of which would be affordable.
And these are multifamily buildings?
No.
No, the twenty-four houses.
Single family detached.
Single fam, single family detached, roughly twenty-two hundred square feet each.
And what's the acreage?
Um, well, the, the entire parcel is about fifteen acres.
But the individual lots will be like, what, eight thousand square feet?
There's no, they're, it's condos, so.
It's all condos.
So there are no lots.
I make mine forty B retroactively?
Yes.
Right, right. Um, there, there are a fair amount of wetlands on the property, so they're, they're confining at least the, the dwellings to the upland portion. So comments, comments are gonna be due back to Mass Housing, uh, July sixteenth. The goal is to have a draft, all the comments into the selectmen, so that there can be, uh, actually, probably into me, so that we can work with town council on a, a draft letter, which the selectmen will review at their July twelfth meeting, and then get that into Mass Housing.
Is the planning board cut out of this for comments?
No, the planning board should submit comments.
Okay. Now, we're gonna get access to the plans, or?
I've, so, we, we only received two hard copies of the application. I asked the applicant for five more hard copies. I also have digital copies, um, which I can, I can send a link to everybody for that. It's sizable. It's a little cumbersome, because they broke it down. You know, each file corresponds to one tab in the application, um, but.
Probably just getting the hard copy will be, beat up on them to get the hard copy would be.
So we should be, we should be getting that soon. Originally, originally, the site walk was scheduled for tomorrow. That's obviously been changed, um, so, um, I have been thinking we would get the hard copies then. And we'll only have one hard copy to share, so anybody who feels comfortable with the electronic version, I'll be happy to give that link.
But the ZBA is really the decision-maker?
Um, yeah, this is the first stage. So the first stage is site approval. And they need to get a letter of eligibility from Mass Housing. So Mass Housing is reviewing the application at the same time that we are. They will take the town's comments into consideration, uh, as well as their own review comments. And if they feel that it is a viable project, they'll issue the letter of eligibility. If they don't, they won't. Once the letter of eligibility has been, um, written and, uh, given to the applicant by Mass Housing, they have two years within which to submit an application. The application is submitted to the ZBA, so they, they are the.
They're the approving authority.
They're the approving authority. The other thing that, um, Paul Haverty was in the meeting yesterday. He's a forty B expert. And he offered, he's also the co-chair of the Affordable Housing Committee on Chappa. So he has offered to set up a training for us, um, for the town on forty B. And that will happen before, hopefully before the June fourteenth, um, meeting. One date that was put out was possibly the June ninth, which had been talked about as the zoning meeting. Since the ZBA are really the key player, Susan is checking with them to see what their schedule is, and then, um, we'll get those schedules and hopefully find something that works for.
It will be at night. It will not be a day meeting?
No, it'll be at night.
Night meeting?
A night meeting, yeah. Yeah, seven or seven-thirty, because I thi, I think Howie in particular has a diff, Howie in particular has a hard time getting.
Yeah, getting, getting home, yeah.
So as soon as we have possible dates for that, I'll let everybody know.
Yeah, I would think that once the ZBA is in the deliberation process on the application, probably wanna have Paul Haverty involved right up front.
We're in discussions about how to handle that.
Good.
And there will be another opportunity during that period for, I think, all the boards and committees to, to weigh in and provide their comments. So that's kind of where it stands right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Proposed work for the ni, cut, work program for the next year. I think Martha had sent you all out a note, just kind of saying what thoughts might you have of things that we should be working on. I think, as Martha indicates, we do have to complete the master plan and get that done, and I, you know, we, we're waiting, we, we've slid a little bit with our various committees, um, while we're waiting for the survey to be completed. So I think that once the survey comes back in and we have this larger town meeting, I think that we need to go back out and really start working on this thing to get it done.
Yeah, absolutely.
And what's our target, really, the fall, isn't it September? So.
Yeah.
This is the summer that we really need to work on the various elements and get them written and completed and. So that's, that's, I think, the first order of business, and other things that I haven't really thought of. That's really kind of occupied my time and my, my thoughts.
Well, one thing I know that we do need to, to do is rewrite our sign bylaw, um, it's based on recent, uh, it was a Supreme Court decision, um, it really can't be content-based, and so that's something that we're gonna have to deal with, um, probably with town council to make sure that we rewrite it so that it's in compliance with, with the court decision.
What was the court decision? I wasn't aware of that.
It was, um, something, it was Reed versus, um, I can't remember what it was now. But it was a decision that basically said that, um, identifying signs by their content, um, you know, gets into issues with.
Oh, it's the one that had to do with the gun thing down at Fenway Park?
Was that the genesis?
I think that was. You know, the guy who had the big, you know, how many, every day he would change the sign and how many people were being killed by, by guns? And then, um, they found, he had to move the sign, and he had to take it down. I think that was the case.
I think there was something else. It was another community. And I attended a workshop on this at the CPTC conference, um, in March, and hadn't really expected much, but it was actually got into some very, very interesting questions. You know, even, you know, how, how do you, you know, how do you regulate it without actually having to read what's in the sign? It, it has to be totally content-neutral.
Well, typically, though, zoning ordinances regulate size.
But, you know.
And location.
But we're talking about, we talk about commercial signs, we talk about other kinds of signs, and if it's a commercial sign, yeah, what the purpose of that sign is. So it has to be.
For an entrance to a development or something like that, which would get into content, in theory.
Right, right. So, um, I think we're gonna need to get some guidance on this, but we're not in compliance right now, so we're gonna have to, to work on this.
So, so if I were to Google, do you know what I could Google to research this?
Um, I'll, I'll give it to you. I've got it. It's, yeah, I think it's Reed versus, um.
Because George was on the sign thing, and we were gonna, he, he was concerned about certainly the signage that's out on Route One, and we kind of stopped it.
There was a distinct lack of interest in others?
Right, there was a distinct lack of interest in others and in other boards, and, uh, but now, if we are not in compliance, then we have to do it, don't we?
Should be a different attitude.
Yeah, and it's kind of a different, different question. It's not an aesthetic question. Um, we also did get into discussion at that, at that conference, um, session about existing signs being grandfathered, um, which, you know, doesn't help that issue. But there's actually a lot to, to, to think about. So that's, that's one that I know that we need to deal with.
I would assume the building commissioner would still be the enforcement authority?
Yes.
Hmm.
Okay.
And Sam and I have talked about it a little bit.
I mean, we, we really have a small problem here, I mean, compared to other communities that have signs, multiple signs, I mean, Newburyport or Salisbury, look at the signage that's in Salisbury and Amesbury and places like that. And then I think that, am I right, that we, after Borrego is completed, we need to go back and take a look at the solar bylaw? Am I right or wrong?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But not for the fall?
Not for the fall, no, but.
Maybe, maybe for the spring, depending.
Once it's completed, then we'll take a look at and analyze it.
I've been amazed at how well that appears to be working out.
I did too.
There's not a lot of things to say, oh my God, what were we thinking of? You know, my good luck rather than good management probably managed to get it pretty close to right.
Well, we did a lot of.
Everybody had opportunity.
Was that?
Everybody had opportunity to say what they wanted to say, and it was, it was good.
And we did a lot of research on it as well.
Yeah, there was a lot of thought went into it. It wasn't just thrown together.
No. Then we do have the, the shorter list that Sam had given us, um, last year, plus whatever comes out of our meeting with the ZBA.
And, I'm sorry, do we have a date for that?
Well, it was gonna be June ninth, but that might be the, the chapter forty B training, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any other thoughts on things that they have an interest in?
I'm intrigued by the antenna they're putting up on Plum Island on a light pole for cellular. It's a can antenna that no one would notice. It looks like a power transformer.
Where's it on Northern Boulevard?
It's right in the center.
In the center, like where the, where you access the beach?
Right, this is being put up by Sulco and Verizon, they're the same company. But it's to have lobes that face up and down the island and give good cellphone service, plus it adds more bandwidth, because I don't have any service in my neighborhood.
I have terrible service.
I have terrible service. It's awful. In fact, I finally got in touch with Verizon, and they came out and said, your house has no signal at all. So we lost, we had good signals, good use of phones, and then it disappeared. And it was thought that maybe the tower in Georgetown that we hit was out of service, at least in part, and that wasn't it. And what's happening is bandwidth is being chewed up by data, and cellphone access to bandwidth is disappearing. So they gave me a booster for the house, and I pick up from the satellite. I have a little satellite antenna on the window, and it goes to a box, and that puts a new signal in the house, which is really great.
Yeah.
I've got a charge, it costs two hundred and fifty dollars, that's your usual price, and they offered to give it to me for ninety-nine dollars. And I said, I didn't cause the problem, so they said, we'll send it to you next week for your charge.
Sprint does the same thing.
The same thing, yeah.
Verizon, it's supposed to be excellent.
So it makes a big difference. But if we had, if we talked with Verizon, or somebody did, uh, about where, where else would you like some of these antennas, which are unobtrusive, they're relatively cheap, I think, and I could have one right across the street from me. I'd love it. But if they had thoughts to do it elsewhere, maybe someone could push the issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, um, um, that brings up a point. Our, our wireless, um, bylaw was written back in the early two thousands, and it actually, there have been some changes in the law, so I think that is another thing that needs to be.
I was sort of heading in that direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's been, there's some complaints about the, um, the wind power section of the bylaw, too, as being too restrictive.
That's all right.
Um, in terms of proximity to other things. And they could be right, I don't know, but, uh, I do know that when wind power first happened, first started, blades were flying off the, the wind machines with gay abandon, and they finally got a handle on that. They don't fall off anymore and slice through people's houses. And it could be, and we've been accused of this, but it could be that the setbacks that we require presently are reflective of the bad old days and maybe could be loosened up some to make wind power somewhat more attractive.
The only thing I've heard about, about wind turbines is the noise that emanates from them, and if you have.
There's a little noise, and there's a little flicker, too, that some people really get bothered by.
It's quite a bit of flicker.
Yeah, the flicker can be a real issue.
So anyway, I, I, I think we could take a look at it. We, we certainly haven't had any, no demand for it.
No.
The last one was about five or six years ago.
Well, there was, there, actually, Mr. Bashaw was looking at putting three turbines on his parcel, which obviously didn't go forward.
Yeah, do you know why?
There wasn't enough wind. So, and I think that's one of the reasons we're really not getting too many here, is that there, you know, probably down in some areas of the marsh, we've got good wind, but other than Old Town Hill.
And you really don't want to have it down in the middle of the marsh.
Well, no, there's objections, there'd be objections to that.
Don't want to do that.
You're still going to get to them, and building a road out across the marsh wouldn't be that popular.
No.
Birds don't like those blades.
No.
It's tough on birds.
It is.
But so are picture windows when you get down to it.
I know.
Bear in mind, the 25% of all animal kingdom species are expected to be either extinct or on the slippery slope by 2050. So knocking off the occasional bird may not be that bad in the big scheme of things.
I don't have picture windows, but I have a bird flying into one of our windows at least once a week. It's just unbelievable.
You get a, you.
They just fly in?
Fly right into the house, yeah.
You built your house in a flight path.
Yeah. We don't, we have a picture window. It's not that bad. We get the occasional bird. We get more from predator cats than we do from self-destructing.
So any other thoughts people have about items we want to look at? I think we can certainly look at the solar. I don't know that we have a lot of demand here, but I think we, excuse me, the wind. And we certainly want to look at the solar after Borrego.
What about anything regarding the zoning districts? We've been working for a while on sort of making the boundaries coterminous with parcel boundaries. And we did that almost everywhere except for two districts.
Well, one of the things I was thinking of is that depending on how we come out of the master plan, in terms of things like being more aggressive with multi-family or a denser, and let's assume for a second that that's one of the recommendations, then that falls to us to follow up on that and aggressively pursue it. So I think that a lot of our work program may in fact come from the master plan, just as it did, you know, 10 years ago. And, you know, the planning, everyone had some responsibilities to implement it, but the planning board had most of them. So I think that those kind of zoning things may come naturally from that. And hopefully they do. I mean, I would hope that they do. Yeah, I'd like, that would be good. Okay. Anything else on this subject, or we'll just go to the?
Yeah, I mean, it's something everybody, please keep thinking about.
Keep thinking about it, and if you have ideas, let us know. Board of Selectmen, well, you've kind of led us about the 40B and the master plan committee, and the, excuse me, the municipal building committee.
Right. And the only other thing, the selectmen did vote last night unanimously to adopt the multi-hazard mitigation plan. So that is official now.
Now we're legal.
Now we're legal. We can actually apply for FEMA grants and good things like that.
You know what happened to that MBTA meeting that kind of disappeared? Sort of like?
I believe that there actually was a meeting of some sort anyway.
Was there?
But it wasn't, you know, not related now to any specific grant application. I know that Doug is looking at other options.
Okay.
For that, so. That's all I know.
Anything else from the selectmen?
A lot of license, liquor licenses and things last night, so. No, I don't think so. They did, they did the same thing last night that we did tonight. They reorganized, but essentially it was, Jeff is still the chair, and Chuck is the vice chair, and Damon is the clerk.
Okay. At MVPC, they also, or we also last Thursday approved the Merrimack Valley mitigation plan, which of course is all of these leading up to it. And that was submitted. Peter Fippen made a great presentation about the Sandy Grant work that he's been doing, which is really incredibly extensive.
They've done an awful lot down there.
A huge amount of work.
And Jeff.
And Jeff, and UNH, and Woods Hole, and I guess BU, just a huge conglomerate of people that are doing a lot of work.
A lot of people have an aura in that water, yeah.
And I think the major thing that, well, which piqued my interest, which Jeff and I have talked about, is this model that they're creating about, you know, the flow of sand and how it's, how it's, where the blockages to it, and how in fact it can change over time. And I guess that modeling is now just beginning to be done. They're doing an awful lot of the work on planting the dune grass, and they have lots of volunteers, I mean, hundreds of volunteers that they work on. So it was, it was a pretty good presentation.
What UNH has done down at, right on the beach, looks really good.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's taken and it's working.
The only other thing which Martha sent to all of you, if you have any interest in this, Thursday, June 23rd, it starts at 8:30. Keynote speaker is Secretary Ash, if you have any interest in that. I think you have a copy of it that was sent by digitally to you all. It might, it might be interesting. Ash is one of the major players in Baker's administration, and so it could be interesting. So. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got.
I think you got it.
I believe I got a notice from MVPC on this.
Yeah.
And I don't think so. Thank you very much.
All right. CONCON, John, anything?
Yeah, nothing particular, lots of little stuff.
Okay.
Nothing earth-shattering. It'll be probably a biggie when the, that 40B comes across.
Yeah. And ZBA?
ZBA was active May 19th meeting. Special permit was granted to David Mullen at 27 Northern Boulevard with respect to building height and lot coverage. Special permit was granted to Sean Pearson and Ronald Pearson, 10 Fruit Street for a detached accessory apartment.
Fruit Street here?
Yeah, 10 Fruit Street, down by, behind Pearson Plaza.
Behind Pearson.
Yeah. And then other cases, we had a Van Luling, that's the last name, best, sorry if I mispronounced it. 8 Johnson Road, he wanted a finding to increase building height and lot coverage within permitted limits. I think that was continued for more plans. There's a request from Peter under Yentoughs, 25 Pine Island Road for a special permit for a detached accessory apartment. I believe that was continued.
That one's been on there for a while.
Yeah.
They keep getting.
New detail, but it's not quite, quite there yet. Then we have David and Kathleen Strand, 9 Blue Hill Avenue, requesting to authorize previously permitted deck. It was previously permitted in 2013 to add 104 square feet of deck coverage. And there was some opposition to that, so I think that's continued now for a little more information, too. Then the Verizon Wireless, the antenna on Plum Island, that was discussed. There were some questions about location and land ownership, but I think that's going to go forward.
So, has a public hearing on that actually opened?
I'm not sure. I think that, well, no, they will be there, I think, for the public hearing the next time.
Okay.
That's it.
What was the first one again? That was on 27?
27 Northern Boulevard. Yeah, there's an existing house there with a large, they have three contiguous lots. Is that right, Martha?
Yes.
Yes.
I think he had two, and he acquired a third.
A third. So there's a lot of land there, but he, there was still need for building.
Is that beach side, or is it the other side?
Other side.
Other side.
Other side.
And the idea is to build, it was called a two-story house, but with the mean height of the roof at 35 feet, you get about a 40-foot ridge pole, and there's going to be a deck on top of the roof, which takes it up to about 45 feet.
Well, about last weekend, I took a drive around, and just in that area between the southern part, I guess Southern Boulevard, and a little bit, there's like seven houses under construction. I mean, pretty big ones. So surprising, I was, there's a couple where they went to the drink, you know, back in 2013.
And also.
These are big houses.
And Ralph Cox's house is going up in the Three Temple Boulevard, which is quite a large house.
That's the one that's adjacent to the.
Refuge.
Refuge. It is very big.
Right.
Hey.
People have been asking about that one.
Lots of, lots of issues about that, yeah.
And actually, while we're on, one thing I forgot about, the selectmen's meeting last night, there was, there was, I guess, an accident in front of the Plum Island Grill recently. And basically, as a result of that, the selectmen voted last night to, or approved last night, putting a stop sign there at the intersection of Sunset and the Plum Island Turnpike Boulevard, right there, which was, it was.
Four-way or just coming in?
Just coming off of Sunset.
Coming off of, so.
No, there's a stop line, but there's no sign there. And MVPC, when they did their study a few years ago, actually did recommend putting in a stop sign with an island, which is what they're going to do.
Is it going to be on the island?
It's going to be on the island.
Great, I know they were discussing that, and it was difficult to find a place on the right-hand side to put it.
Well, it's.
On the left.
Yeah, so it's going to be on the right-hand side of the existing stop line.
Good.
Between the line and the grill itself, and the island is there to protect cars from backing into the pole.
Yeah, good.
So.
So I think maybe you all saw that the Plum Island Grill is for sale, and then there's work going on at Jeans.
The Plum Island Grill or the other?
Plum Island Grill is for sale. And at Jeans is some work being done, and it's going to make it a ice cream.
Place, yep, yep, that was purchased.
Good for them. That'd be nice. Haven't heard that.
Heard that.
You've heard that?
No, I may have been confused. I had heard something was for sale, and I assumed it was that, as opposed to Plum Island.
Yeah, I think it's, well, yeah, the Plum Island Grill. In fact, there was a rather large article in the local paper about it. Okay, anything else that people want to chat about? With that, then I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting and adjourn.
So hold.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done deal. Thank you. See you.